Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this August 21st, 2023. Monday study session of the Pierce County Council. The time is 11:03 a.m. All members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell and Councilmember Kruever. I'm just checking online to make sure they're not in our Zoom room. So again, all members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell and Councilmember Kruever, who are excused. Item number two is review of the August 22nd, 2023 council meeting agenda. Ms. Long to brief the council.
Thank you, and good morning. This is the meeting agenda for tomorrow afternoon's regular council meeting. It has been amended. We'll start with your consent agenda. For introduction and scheduling, you have a few ordinances. The first is 202333, and this is granting a non-exclusive franchise to Mox Networks LLC for a wireline system in Pierce County. This is for referral to EIDC, and you'll be setting the final on that for September 26th. Next is 202334, and this is authorizing the approval of applications for open space classification for parcels located in unincorporated Pierce County. And this will go straight to final on September 19th. Next is 202335, and this is amending section 20602 of the code. This is related to executive department elective directors to include the service of process as a function of the county auditor's office. And this is for referral to rules. You'll be setting the final on this one for September 19th. I don't know what version of the agenda you have. There should not be another item there under ordinances. So we'll move to two resolutions. You have two here. The first is to our 2023126. This is authorizing the surface water management division to accept funding from the RCO for the Pierce County Lead Entity Program. This is for referral to rules, and you'll be setting the final on this one for September 5th. And next is our 2023127. This is setting the date of an evening District Number Six Council Meeting. That will be Wednesday, September 27th at 6:30 p.m. at the DuPont City Council Chambers. The final on this one will be set for August 29th. Moving to see your final action items on your consent agenda under two resolutions. You have our 2023124. This is confirming the reappointment of an existing member to the Pierce County Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And then finally, you have our 2023128. This is confirming the removal of one existing member from the Pierce County Arts Commission due to unexcused absences from meetings. Under other items, you'll see three motions there. These all have to do with requests for the use of vacancy savings. The first is approving the use of nine and a half thousand dollars in vacancy savings for corrections. This is to cover the increased costs of food service providers. Next is a motion approving the use of $331,000 in the Sheriff's Department for County-City Building Security Enhancements. And finally, you have a motion approving the use of 300, over 300,000 in vacancy savings in the Sheriff's Department for County-City Building Security Equipment or Related Costs. This is to be used only after consultation with the presiding judge of Superior Court or Designee. Moving to proclamations and recognitions. You actually have one award tomorrow and two proclamations. The first is the presentation of the Vision 2050 Award to Betty Capastani from Economic Development. And we'll have Josh Brown from PSRC here to present that as well. And then the next is a proclamation proclaiming August 24th as the Humane Society for Tacoma and Pierce County Day in Pierce County. You have three council members requesting that one, so you guys can decide who of those will be reading it.
Councilmember Hitchens.
I had a conversation with Councilmember Kruever this morning as she was heading out, and she would be very interested in like to read that. It's very exciting.
Are you okay with that?
Of course, that sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Next is proclaiming August 31st, 2023 as overdose awareness day in Pierce County, and Councilmember Hitchens will be reading that one. Moving to ordinances, you do have a few here. First is 202321, and this is declaring certain county-owned and grilled property as surplus. This is known as the Green Forest Edition Track A. And this was forwarded without recommendation at rules on June 5th. And this was continued from the June 13th council meeting. Next is 202329. This is amending Chapter 448 of the code entitled County Funds, abolishing and renaming certain funds and adding language for the creation, abolition, and oversight of funds. This received a do-pass at rules on August 7th, and there is one amendment to that that Mr. Bokey will discuss shortly. Number three is 202331. This is authorizing the approval of applications for open space classification. This was final. This did not have a committee hearing. And number four is 202324. This is repeat. Well, this is the veto override. So this was, this was passed on July 25th by the council vetoed on August 9th, and this is on your agenda for tomorrow. Under Section 9 Resolutions, you have our 2023122. This is approving this Human Services and Behavioral Health Advisory Board's 202425 Funding Recommendations for the Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts Fund and Liquor Tax. This was forwarded without recommendation at Health and Human Services on August 15th. And those are your agenda items for tomorrow's regular council meeting.
Thank you. Are there questions about tomorrow's council meeting agenda? Wanted to make note that proposal 202321, this is declaring surplus property on 66th Avenue East. In my estimation, it is not ready for council consideration. There are still conversations happening with departments about their potential long-term need and some issues that do not seem to be resolved with the surrounding property owners. It does not seem like it's ready for council consideration. So I will be recommending that we continue this indefinitely and give Facilities Management Department more time to work with neighbors, adjacent property owners, and with department staff to resolve issues before council is ready to consider surplusing the property. So that's on 202321. Are there any other questions about tomorrow's agenda? Not seeing any. There is one amendment, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Chair Mello. Paul Bokey, council staff. So ordinance number 202329 is was originally made at the request of the executive abolishing a number of special revenue funds and capital project funds that were determined not to be to be needed any longer. Council added some language about creation and abolition of funds. And, and then after rules, there was consultation with the Finance Department, and, and then we also staff took a look at, a further look at some of the existing language. So what you have in front of you is amendment number one is adding an effective date. So the effective date would be January 1st, 2024. So we've, but it's important to note that the budget that you will be looking at, the biennial budget, that you'll be looking at, if this passes, we'll assume that those funds are going to be gone at the beginning of the year. So so, but they need time. Finance needs time to clear those accounts and, and move the dollars if there are any left. And then there's a number of other kind of cleanup items. We're replacing subheadings where we use the word deposits to revenues. We think that'll be clear and expenditures to purpose. And we think that that, that'll help clear up. There was also a request by the executive on planning and public works, emergency management department and facilities management department. There's, there's different accounts dealing with those that they add or the word or designee. So the, rather than just the, the fund manager being the head of the planning public works department, it can be the head of the planning public works department or designee. Same thing with emergency management, and that deals with codifying the communications network one and changing that name. And the facilities management department or designee, and that's in that county-city building. You, you created that account a while back to handle the purchase of the new building and various things like that, and the bond proceeds will be going into that. So that, those are just cleanup items on that. So that's
Thank you. Are there questions about amendment one to proposal 202329 related to accounting funds? I'm not seeing any. Just coming back to the amended agenda for tomorrow's meeting. Ms. Long, I'm sure you caught it, but on the consent agenda on some of the other items, section F is in Frank. Item one, there's a, there's a typo that I'm sure you already caught. It should say increased food service provider costs. Let you correct that with the team. And make sure that we are clear. On the, there, there was a previous version of a consent agenda that got, yes, a previous version of the consent agenda that got sent out that had a supplemental budget. It is not ready for council consideration in my estimation. We have a couple of minor items here, but there's at least one item that needs more discussion with a few executive departments before this is ready for council consideration. So that is why it did show up at a previous consent agenda, but it needs a little bit more work with some executive departments before it is ready for council consideration. So there will not be a supplemental budget on tomorrow's consent agenda for scheduling. There may be one soon. Other questions or comments about tomorrow's amended meeting agenda, Councilmember Rowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just pertaining to item number four, proposal 2023-24. Can you, Ms. Long, walk me through the process of the veto?
Sure. So these, the veto provisions are enumerated in the charter. The council has 30 days from the date that the executive returns the veto with his veto message to overturn the veto. A veto override vote to be successful requires five vote affirmative votes. There can be no amendments. It's either up or down.
Okay, so no amendments. Okay. Okay, I think that since it's on the agenda, then it will be part of the process. I would say the other process would, could a member bring it up at any time?
It could be brought up at a meeting, right, or a special meeting?
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. To be clear, the, the thanks for the clarifying question, Councilmember Rowell, so that everybody was working off of the same foundation. The, the item in front of us for consideration for override does require five votes. The version that passed council was on a six-o vote. We had one member absent that meeting. But we accepted amendments, and it had an effective date of, I think, December 15th, 2023. There's another amendment if I can remember if there was more than one amendment, but there was at least one amendment that was made to the proposal. And, and the proposal that left council was on a six-zero vote. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the clarifying question, Councilmember Rowell. The, I just want to note that if you're looking for wardrobe suggestions, purple is the color to wear tomorrow because the color that's used for overdose awareness is purple, just as an FYI for those that like to play along. And then my second question is just clarification during Health and Human Services. There were several questions around the Behavioral Health Advisory Plan allocation, and I'm pretty sure that's on the agenda tomorrow, and just want to make sure if there are any questions, feel free to reach out. I know that we got several pieces of documentation from Ms. Merrick, but if there are additional questions, please, either you don't have to come to me, get your own research, but hoping that we can get that out so that we can start the contracting process, so we don't delay some of those services. So as we know, it's a, it's a heavy lift for the team to get it done. So, but just wanted to flag that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands about tomorrow's amended meeting agenda. And Mr. Bokey, there's no grant reports for tomorrow. So seeing no other items to discuss under item two, we'll move to item three, review of committee agendas for the week. Ms. Long.
So CDC this afternoon has been canceled, and EIDC tomorrow morning has been canceled. So the next meeting you have is at noon tomorrow, your regular Tuesday study session. And I'm seeing just the usual agenda. I'm not aware of additions at this time. Three o'clock is your regular council meeting tomorrow. On Wednesday, the 23rd, beginning at 10, is a performance audit committee meeting. There are a couple of items on your agenda, the proposed contract for the evaluation of Pierce County interlocal agreements, and then also the performance audit project updates. And at 1:30 on Wednesday is the Select Committee on Homelessness. Now, you have three discussion items. The first is homelessness, homeless mortality discussion. Second is the functional zero discussion. And finally, you have the inventory of housing interventions and services. And if we find out the presenters, we will certainly add them to your agenda for that day. And those are your meetings for the remainder of this week.
Thank you. I'll, I'll make note that very, that final item, the agenda for the Select Committee on Homelessness. This Wednesday at 1:30 p.m., the County Council's very own council intern, Karen Lynn, will be making that presentation. So if anyone, if, if members want to tune in for that, I highly encourage it so that we can hear the main project that our council intern worked on this summer on our behalf. Councilmember Rowell.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just wanted to make you aware and the other council members, tomorrow's study session under committee reports. I, I have about a 10-minute presentation of the Paris Air Show, and I'd like to be able to get a little latitude to make that presentation. So just heads up on that.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the heads up. Looks, looking forward to hearing all about it. Any other questions for review of committee agendas for this week? Not seeing any. We're going to move to item four, discussion of administrative items. Ms. Murray.
Good morning, Julie Murray, Chief of Staff. I want to remind everyone that we now have finalized a joint session with the port located here for September 5th during our regular Tuesday study session. We finalized a joint meeting with the city of Tacoma for September 19th, which is also during our Tuesday study session, but that will be located at the city of Tacoma's facilities, and it'll be for 90 minutes. So you receive today an updated invitation. So your calendars will be up to date to give yourself time for both travel as well as that additional half hour. And then in light of some of the things that are going on potentially in the city-county building, whether it is during administrative time or other business, I'm working with Brenna Price on updating our COOP plan and looking at some of those materials. And we may need to do some refreshers on our security protocols here within the chambers as well as sort of our notification tree in case of events. And then we'll just follow up and maybe do my plan, not for the next few weeks, but over the course of the next few months, is doing a full update of our COOP plan, which hasn't been updated since 2014. That's all I have.
Thank you. COOP for those following stands for continuity of operations.
Correct.
Any questions for Ms. Murray? Thank you for those updates. That brings us to item five, other business. We'll begin with a federal government briefing. I want to invite to the podium Mr. Dale Lern, our Government Relations Consultant with the federal government. Mr. Lern, welcome back home.
Thank you. Sazan, got it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair Mello, council. Appreciate it. Haven't, just starting to do these in person, so hopefully some of the rust I'll be able to shake off. As you know, it's very different when you're on video versus in person, so bear with me. But definitely appreciate the opportunity to give an update on our federal advocacy. As last, we last spoke in, at the end of January. For the purposes of this discussion, per usual, I'll go over where we are, where I think we're going, and then take certainly any questions. Briefly, our prime focus more recent has been chasing federal funding, especially with a lot of the new tools the federal government has provided, whether it's the bipartisan infrastructure law, the Inflation Reduction Act, the resurrection of community projects at the congressional level. It's been a, kind of shifted our focus primarily on chasing that kind of federal dollar. Part of that effort is protecting existing critical funding the county gets. Sometimes that's in jeopardy, at least seems to be in jeopardy. I know a lot of people get notices from various interest groups saying that they are in jeopardy, and sometimes they are. We, we fight that as well. We do have policy issues, a lot of reactive policy issues, things that happen, things that come up. In the past, we've done pretty extensive broader policy issues. They do take a lot of effort, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. So we're still in the 118th Congress first session. As we discussed in January, we have divided government, and as suspected, it's, it's challenging. It certainly lacks a level of efficiency. One could argue that's kind of part of the American democratic experiment, although we've been around long enough to probably more of an experience. And as a result, we've had very few bills pass through the House and the Senate. We did raise the debt ceiling through January 1st, 2025. That was raised on January 3rd. Sorry, June 3rd. And that specifically set the spending limits for the fiscal year 24 and 25 bills and did some, actually some other policy issues as well. Of course, quickly after that bill was signed by the president, the new House majority then turned around with their majority in the House Appropriations Committee and violated every aspect of that and did adhere to that agreement. So right now, we're kind of going over appeasing a small group of that new majority, about 25 members, and I got, my phone got blown up this morning with their, with their demands to the other 422 members of, of Congress. So what can we realistically anticipate between September and January? They'll come back after Labor Day. Well, there's a few things they have to do, and if they don't do it, they can do what's called a continuing resolution on that legislation, but typically they do several things. And these are just three things that I would highlight that they likely will do. One is the farm bill that deals with crop management subsidies, the important SNAP program for, for children that need nutrition, forestry management, things like that. So that's an item that they likely will do by the end of the year. The National Defense Authorization Act, which sets the policies every year for the Defense Department, is something they typically do every year. Generally falls to the last month of the year in December. They actually do also a lot of other policy on the bill. One of these must-have, must-pass bills, if you have an issue in, you know, in Congress that you really want, it's policy, even if it's unrelated to defense, because everyone wants to pass the NDAA, they, they push the chairs and rankings on both sides of the Hill to get that piece involved. And we've done a lot of policy. In fact, in last year, we did the Water Resources Development Act bill. This is the, the policy. This is the bill that sets the policies for the Corps of Engineers. And then more locally, we did the Puget Sound SOS Act in, in NDAA last year. I don't anticipate as much policy on the NDAA this year, but I know Representative Strickland's working on some military housing measures and trying to get that in this year's NDAA. So the one thing that probably the, certainly the largest item that we'll deal with between now the end of the year is the fiscal year 24 federal budget. As I mentioned, there's a group of folks in the House that want to kind of blow it up, and they have really, really interesting demands that could create a possible short-term shutdown. But I do think the leaders in a coalition in the House will come for us as usual. But we could have a short-term shutdown, and it has real-world impacts. But eventually, we will finally get a bill, omnibus bill, probably done in December. So on that, on the budget, again, a lot of items that impact the county, you know, whether it's, you know, funding streams through, to come through the state or through regional organizations like the PSRC. These are critical funding that come through that certain, you know, they're often targets by various members, but no. You know, we think Senate bill, Senate bills will probably trump the, the House bills, which is better numbers for folks like us in Pierce County. However, one thing that we've been very much invested in and working a lot of time on is they brought back the community projects funding. It's the third year in a row that we've, we've been doing it. And FY 2023, we had six requests, and we supported many of our partners' requests. We had two of those, and the Sheriff's Office got one as well. We had to modify one. There was a $3.5 million mark for the five homeless shelter that due to some changing circumstances, we've had to ask for a modification. And I was very surprised when we went to HUD asking for modifications. They've been very accommodating to us so far. And we currently have a plan to focus that funding on the FIF workforce training and shelter program. And hopefully soon, we'll have that in front of HUD. We have to have the, the project sponsor, congressional sponsor, because they dictate congressional tent, who's, who was Senator Cantwell's first approved, and then we go to HUD. For fiscal year 2024, so the pros, we've surprisingly had both the House and Senate report all 12 appropriations bills out of the Appropriations Committee on both sides of the Hill. This is typical for the House. The House typically does this by the August recess. The Senate, no. And the last time we did this was in 2018, where the Senate reported all of them. And we can, we can definitely praise Senator Murray, who's the chair of the committee, and her ability to work with her counterparts, Senator Collins from, from Maine, in getting that done. In this year's process, we made five requests. Again, we supported many of our, our Pierce County partners, their requests. And in these subcommittee bills, we got three of our five. The Business Accelerator Program, the South Hill 122nd Project, and then some money for Springer as well. And this was a more challenging environment. The Senate decided to remain to, to, to keep their cap at a max of 1% of the overall discretionary spending, but the new House majority decided to lower theirs to half a percent. So fewer in the House. So that made it even more challenging, but we've, we've done very well. As far as the process in the past, if, if something made the House bill or a Senate bill, it made the final bill unless there was a problem with it. We had to make a decision last year because we did have a problem with our FIF project in between when the, when the, when the bills were laid down and when the final bill was put together in December, and we decided to be silent, which was a, which was a good tactic. Because in the end, we were able to negotiate, and, and hopefully we'll be able to make those changes and keep the money here in Pierce County. We don't anticipate any changes for fiscal year 2025 because congressional dynamics is, will be the same. But when the final bill comes out, we'll again analyze it and approach it, you know, with that, those, that analysis and evolve if we have to. On the grant side, on the federal grant side, as I discussed, there's a lot more tools now. There's been a couple of big pieces of legislation passed by the Congress, signed by the president. There's existing funding streams. Because of those pieces of legislation, there's more discretionary funding as well going through the state and regional organizations like the PSRC. So we're seeing a lot more federal funding, whether it's on the formula side or the discretionary side, which is competitive. And on the competitive side, we've been closely monitoring those opportunities, analyzing which ones are good for us. Some of them are new, new opportunities that didn't exist, exist before. New programs. In 2023, we've gotten funding for the Safe Streets effort. We folded our request into the PSRC request, and they got 4.9 million. We, two of our Culver projects got in the, the new Culver program that was designed and created by Senator Cantwell and Congressman Kilmer. They're both in and around the McKenna area, era, area, I'm sorry, McKenna, McKenna area, which my brother lives. No coincidence. I've been living there since 1991, but both of them are around there. Um, we're also waiting on a pending grant with the Christie program, which is the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Program. God, these names are so long, but that's involves a piece of Canyon Road. One issue we've been working on recently with Councilmember Hitchens is trying to get federal partners involved in our juvenile justice, regional juvenile justice efforts. We've, we've started to develop a pretty good relationship with the US DOJ, and we have a pending community-based violence intervention And we have a pending community based violence intervention and prevention initiative grant with them involving around efforts involving schools in the in the juvenile justice area. We're hoping that will then springboard us towards a more collaboration between the DOJ and our efforts on on fighting criminal justices and juvenile justice in particular. The, as I mentioned, the Inflation Reduction Act, a more recent piece of legislation and legislation in the IIJA mostly involve green energy and healthcare issues, which are important. But there are some clean energy opportunities. One program, new program that they put in was this neighborhood access and equity grant program evolving around sort of safe and walkable communities. We've had a lot of requests in the last several years on this and it's a new program and hopefully we'll continue to analyze as those notices available funding come out. And I think, I mean, I'm always pro, we should apply, but we have to have good projects that are ready to go. And it's one that I hopefully will continue to highlight. And if we're ready to go on something, we should apply for that grant program. Again, on policy, many issues come up on policy that we weigh in. You know, examples in the past, you know, housing, public health, flood insurance, things involving the Department of Defense tax issues. And in the past, we've really, you know, put together sort of bigger policy initiatives to push towards the federal government. And these are coordinated efforts that have a partners and research and target, you know, finding our targets, doing separate meetings in DC on those. We still do that to a lesser extent. We've been focused, obviously, because of all these new funding tools, more on funding. But we're certainly ready. And if the county comes up with items that are worthy of that large coordinated effort to fight for a big policy issue or a couple, we're prepared to do that. Some of the things in the past we've done that on are the PL flood control workforce board issues, things involving JBLM, the Mount Rainier Monitoring System, the opioid fight. And then just a few court policy items we are currently working on. The Jones Levy, which sort of spun out of the PL flood control initiative, trying to shake some some funding from there. The youth violence efforts that's relatively new. And then we were on a call with Emergency Management, the Washington Task Force One has been deployed to Maui. And we're looking, we see that as an opportunity, not only for us, but also to highlight those 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 task force nationwide and get our very powerful members of our delegation to see that and to hopefully get more funding nationwide for those efforts. With all that, I if you have any questions, and if I don't know the answer to the question, I promise I will get back to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Learn. Thank you for you're here for the August recess. And thank you for taking the opportunity to come and visit in person. And for all you do on our behalf in DC. Are there questions or discussion items to raise with Mr. Learn? We'll start with Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Learn, for coming in person.
Yes, it feels great.
Nice to see you.
A little rust. Hopefully, hopefully I shook it off a little bit.
You you built momentum up. You were doing good by the time you got done. The new FAA bill
Yeah.
that the House just passed. What do you feel the success in the Senate is going to be pertaining to, you know, pilot training and being able to keep pilot retention extended beyond the 65? What what you're feeling on?
Well, it's funny, I have a very personal, my father was a commercial airline pilot and of course, long ago, and he had to retire at 16. He hated it, but uh because he didn't, he's still healthy and didn't have a lot to do. But um well, Senator Cantwell's chair of that committee in the Senate, and it's funny, I was a couple of months ago at a conversation with her. She's hopeful that they'll be able to negotiate, you know, not only the quality and type of training, there's a lot of resist, some pilots resist, you know, the qualifications because they want to keep their profession to a certain level. The hours are very important as well. So I'm I'm confident she seems confident they'll get something done on that.
Okay, because you know, what what I'm hearing from the commercial pilots
Yeah.
themselves is obviously, you know, air travel is back in a big way.
Yeah.
And they just, you know, they're expanding flights globally. And now that, you know, India and others have this emerging travel need that the the pilots, like any other industry out there, are restricted because we just do not have the inflow of commercial pilots like we used to 20 years ago. And, you know, we have to come up with a way to not necessarily make it easier, but a better path forward to look at the next five, 10 years from now, not just the immediate.
Yeah.
And if we could extend the retirement age, I mean, like you say, I I think that would would help, but the other things within, and they're calling it what the mosaic bill, you know, what what I think would help in our pilot training, we have a lot of flight schools in Pierce County. So we could get that where the the simulators become, you know, part of their air training instead of, you know, being in the air, they can actually still qualify for some of their training in in the flight simulators. So see what you can do, keep us informed on that.
Great issue. It's interesting. It's more anecdotal, but my my dad had been a Vietnam fighter pilot and then he came out and all those hours they they were giving these guys, you know, these great jobs in the beginning of the jet age. And then as these schools, mostly four year institutions had piloting involved, they resisted those people because they didn't go through the same thing. And now though, now that accumulation of folks are now resisting some of these efforts, but it's a clear need. And when I heard Senator Cantwell talk about it, they know it and they want, I think we'll have a good negotiation on that. And they, I think they will get an FAA bill by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for joining us this morning. I have two things that I wanted to to flag or just ask about. So within the farm bill,
Yeah.
there's a little subsection where they're introducing a program that's gonna add an additional benefit, at least it's currently there to feed low income kids over the summer.
Yes.
And one of the things that I've heard is that is going to pass through our state. And then the state has to figure out how to implement, but there's some, there's question mark of who's paying for that. And NACO has flagged, is it county, states, school districts? So just keeping an eye on that because it's not a space that we've played in or been involved in. Um, and so if it if as it moves through the system, if it looks like it's going to end up at county, while I'm excited, we've not done that. And I think we need to be ready for that if and work with our state partners to make sure because I think it's important. So just wanted to keep an eye on that.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a little tiny subsection on some random page, but really important to feed kids. Um, so more statement. The second is a question around just, I guess, a request around PFAS. A lot of my communities are really struggling and our state has and our county has a lot of small water districts, small water hookups areas. And I don't think that we are currently requiring those smaller groups to test for PFAS. And I don't know what happens when, when if the federal government were to say every water system must test for PFAS and then deal with it, we we have nothing in 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 the works that I've seen. And what I'm hearing from Lakewood as far as cost, I know an HOA couldn't do. And we have water districts that are, you know, 20 to 100, and I don't know what happens then. So I think we need to keep an eye on that just because of how, especially in Pierce County, we've allowed water districts to go and just kind of just be aware and and think about.
The forever chemical issue is is huge. And actually, Deputy Secretary of the Army Amy Borman will be coming to the Northwest, I think at the end of September to go to both the Akama Training Center and JBLM. So I'll get some information on that. She the military, as you well know, wants to ensure they understand everything before they commit anything, right? But I think they're getting closer. She heads the whole Army's effort nationwide. And I met her through a friend that works with her. So I'll get that information to you when she comes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you. And good to see you in person, Mr. Learn. Just a couple mostly comments. I'm just happy to hear you mention FEMA funding and especially for Task Force One. And I was just talking to constituents last week about some question about whether FEMA has reduced CERT funding to help our local communities get prepared. There was some confusion about whether it was at the FEMA level or somewhere down the line that that these dollars are being reduced. So that's one question I have, and I actually emailed Representative Kilmer's office about that too, just so you're aware of the communication. Broadband is something that we care a lot about in Pierce County. And there seems to be some tweaks that would be really helpful in regards to how the federal government sets criteria for what is adequate broadband. Right now, my understanding that it's it's a connectivity of 25 to 3. The state looks at 100, 100 as being adequate. And then there's even some question in the in the BEED grant, which is the the primary one for the federal government about whether 253 is actually even required or if an entity, a third party provider says it's providing connectivity at at 10. If that's happening, then they're good to go when that really is not adequate at all. So we can get you some more information, but it sounds like some tweaks. Pierce County has had a really hard time being competitive and we haven't received any of these BEED grants, even though we have some areas of our county in my district as well as in the eastern part in particular, and then spots kind of all over the county that have no connectivity or have ridiculously like ineffective connectivity. So would love to follow up with you on that so we can be more competitive. I know the departments have made applications and it's it's been challenging and the department can give you even more information on what would be helpful.
Yes.
I'm sorry, interrupt.
No, 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 I I was interrupting you. Sorry, Councilmember. But hey, you know, this is one of these programs. We've had existing broadband expansion programs through commerce and ag and for the rural part of it. And and it's government, it's federal government, and they have to sort of move along and seemingly at a slower pace to to catch up to reality. And then we infused all this new money in the IIJA for this. And they're struggling with trying to adapt that. But it's important that people who are on the ground dealing with it and the state who deals with it as well as communicating that to the federal government. And we can help do that more if there if there are particular issues, but I'll look into it for sure.
Awesome. Awesome. And yeah, it sounds like just some some tweaks that
Yep.
could help counties like ours that they're really needed and be competitive. Happy to hear about the increased dollars for roadside improvements. We've got lots of interest in bike paths and pedestrian paths. So I'm happy to hear about that. But I never pass up an opportunity to mention the Fox Island Bridge.
Yes.
It's not something we're asking for big dollars for now, but I always talk about it because at some point we will be. And so we want to make sure you guys keep that in mind. And then finally, fish passages. Great to hear about the projects in McKenna. I know the rest of us have projects in our, they're all of our districts. I certainly have a lot of projects in mine. And so thank you for continuing to promote dollars coming our ways to improve fish passages.
So I would just say, Councilmember on the Fox Island Bridge, we have programs for bridges. They 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 heavily rely on metrics of kind of a cost benefit analysis. And if you have few residents, and I don't mean this, I'm just saying how it is that the cost versus benefit in that analysis sometimes is lost if there are fewer residents. And and I would just continue to push Congress and and in the bridge program, there's a, there's a smaller bridge program that might be possible. So
Okay.
And I've talked about it with some of the directors. We've certainly something they they know what's important to you and important to the county.
Yeah, thank you. And we we do know it's a tough one. I know the department is working real hard to to identify ways forward. And then I just thought of one last thing. Councilmember Hitchen mentioned PFAS, which is really important. So I also want to mention the the PFAS issue affecting our firefighters. And if there's anything we can do at a national level, because it's affecting our firefighters nationally, the cancer rates are are awful. And we need to make sure we're protecting our first responders.
Of course. And then just just to go back to the to the fish passage, there are four more years of this bill in that program. So I would just suggest and encourage the department, the departments, as well as the the council members, if they have projects to to push them with with those departments and as those no foes come out to to apply, if they're ready to apply.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Learn, I'm going to bring you back to one of the first things you updated Council about this morning. You've been working and that's the the FIF homeless shelter respite issue. You've been working this issue for us pretty hard to try to preserve this appropriation that we that we got. There was some trouble actually spending the dollars.
Yes.
So could you, could you repeat? Especially for newer members, what that was and what the resolution is that's on the horizon?
So Heather and 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 Alice and others, when we were putting and the and the council, we were putting together our fiscal year 2023 request. You know, obviously, housing and homelessness is a huge issue and we had a couple of requests and it was FIF was one of them. And the vision at the time was was pretty solid, right? We had a, you know, facility that, you know, we were going to purchase and build and 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 we had a lot of traction with the members of Congress and they were very excited, but you know, it got that into the Senate bill. We got 3.5 million into the Senate bill, exactly what we requested, if I believe, I remember, serves me right. And then subsequently, both is a viable aspect with the with the potential facility and then some of the partners saw fiscally some issues. We had to make a change and we made a decision, okay, and well, I I strongly suggested that we we don't know for sure. I guess the idea was it may still come together. So let's just, let's not overreact, knowing it might may not. And let's let's get it in statute. Let's get it in the bill and the report language. And then we'll try to deal with HUD. I was very pessimistic that HUD, because we, this is, this has only been around now three years. It was two years at the time when we've gone back to doing the earmark process. Before the the agencies were very accommodating to the members of Congress congressional intent. But I had heard and I hadn't had an issue with anything I'd worked on, but I had heard they were not as much in this sort of resurrected system. So we found out who the regional HUD people, once we sort of decided kind of where we were going. We talked to the sponsor, Senator Cantwell and Senator Murray as the chair of the committee as well and informed our 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 House members. And then we went to HUD and HUD was very accommodating. I was personally surprised. I was like, I went in going, oh, gosh, this is like a maybe like a 30% chance they're going to be fine. We'll figure something out. No, they were like 90% chance. And so we had great conversations with them. Then we started working with the partners like the city and the tribe, like, okay, let's work something, find something that can use this money. We found out how we can use it, what we can use it on. And we're just going through the motions in some ways now to figure out that so we can present it to Senator Cantwell. And if she approves that, when we present it to HUD and we're relatively confident that we'll be able to use the money on those things that we've come together on.
Good. Thank you for repeating that. As I wanted to point that out, when we were in DC, one of the many things we worked on together with members who were able to go back to the try to preserve the appropriation, because it's really hard to get an appropriation in the first place. And then to, and things do happen as as you're implementing the work and you have to pivot, but it's pivoting is easier said than done when you're dealing with a federal appropriation. So
Yeah.
the the work to preserve the appropriation, repurpose it to a similar purpose that can still benefit the people of Pierce County. While a lot of work, I I think time well spent is in that we don't just throw up our hands and say, oh, well, project didn't come together as originally thought, let's just, you know, walk away, you know, you you really rallied to make sure we could preserve the appropriation. We're not the home, we're not, we're not the finish line yet, but
Right.
but preserving that investment is is really significant. So thank you for working so hard.
Welcome.
Well, I'm not seeing any other hands at this time. We do intend to be able to dialogue with Mr. Lerner. At least it's not the only opportunity we have to connect with him. He sends updates as they are appropriate. But we do intend to have these sorts of dialogues, well, once a quarter. Most of the time they'll be over Zoom because Mr. Learn's in DC on our behalf full time. But grateful we could take advantage of your time here for the August.
I will say, I appreciated the timing of this because I was able to go to buy high, I went to Renton High School and we do reunions every 10 years, but every five years we do a get together. I got to go to my 35th reunion get together on Thursday.
Awesome. Thank you again, Mr. Learn. Thank you for being with us. Thanks for everything you do. Let me look to members to see if there's any other business from members this morning. Not seeing any Ms. Long, any other business for Council?
Not today, thank you.
So seeing other business before the Pierce County Council and Monday study session, we are adjourned.